Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 13th, 2022, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. As usual, I'll open by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. So we have, let's, I like to do announcements before public forums. So a couple of announcements. Ed, you said you had one.
Yeah, I just want to remind people, since we had a unique visitor today in our backyard, a very large black bear came to visit us today. So we want to remind people to keep your trash away, make sure your bird feeders are away, and he's just looking for food, so don't be alarmed if you see him walking around the neighborhood. So that's the announcement I wanted to make.
Yeah, there's, there's plenty of them around. So there, the few announcements we have here on the agenda, we want to let people know about a 9/11 tribute stone garden that will be in front of Town Hall. This is a Project 351. It's, it's a Project 351 project by Kate McCullough, who is a member of the class of, she was the class of 2022, and she was an ambassador to Project 351 for Hatfield, which is a statewide youth leader, yeah, youth leadership organization. And they do service projects. So she's painted rocks, and there's going to be the names on there of some lost military heroes, and she's putting together this stone garden. So it'll be out in front of the Town Hall for a few weeks.
And it is there.
It is up.
It's out there, right under the flag, and Kate, along with some of her friends, painted the stones. They did a nice job.
Oh, that's really nice. Now I regret walking in the side door of the building, but I'll have to take a peek at it on our way out. But thank you to Kate for that. Kate's lovely, lovely young woman. And then we have the, the announcement of the grant award for the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant. The town of Hatfield is being awarded $283,900 in grant funds by the Baker Polito Administration, and this is to build climate resilience. So people may remember, we did a series of meetings over the course of last winter or the winter before. It seems like it was, they were all on Zoom.
I think it was in 2020.
Yeah, it was a long, 2020 to 2021.
But the project was finally approved by the state last.
And it was identifying ways in which Hatfield might be vulnerable to climate change, and then this is, this money is in response to, to that information. So it's, you know, that's a lot of money for Hatfield. And did you want to speak at all to maybe some of the projects? Or have those not been completely identified?
They have been identified in the action grant application. So, you know, some of this will involve resilience planning, pretty much. And we will be working with the school department. We'll host education events through a climate curriculum program for students and teachers, and we'll hold public listening sessions with residents from the community. We also have a comprehensive planning committee established, so that group will be, you know, probably meet eight times throughout the first year. This is a two-year program, and we will incorporate climate resiliency into this plan and meet with farmers to look at how agriculture is, agriculture is impacted, and also look at housing and our zoning and economic development.
Flooding and the river.
Infrastructure is huge, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I, you know, thanks for your work on that. Marlene, we appreciate it. It was part of $100 million in funding and technical support to communities across the state. So that's a lot of, that's a lot of money for Hatfield to get. We're happy about that. And then just a reminder, we are going to have an informational meeting on the proposed Connecticut River Bike Trail. This is the bike trail that North Hampton wants to put in, and one small portion of it would be down in the Elm Court area of Hatfield. We know there's been a lot of interest in this, a lot of opposition to this, from what I'm hearing. So we're having an informational meeting on September 22nd at 6:00 PM, and we're having that over in Smith Academy to accommodate the, the folks we expect to come in, so.
And there is material available on the town's website, or if anybody wants to stop by Town Hall, we'll make it available to them.
Oh, that's good to know. Okay, so they can have that ahead of time. Perfect. Those were the, the announcements that were listed. I can't, I don't, I don't think I have anything, anything else. Did you have anything?
I did not.
Okay. Okay, great. So let's backtrack now to public forum. I know, Wendy, you're here for public forum. Is anyone else for public forum? Okay. Wendy, come on up to the hot seat. There's a microphone there.
Thank you for your agenda. Okay. Switch my mask. Thank you. I'm just here and wearing a different hat than I have in other times I've been here in Town Hall, and it's nice to see people I haven't seen in a while. I'm in the Pioneer Valley Symphony. It's an 84-year-old community orchestra, serving and performing in and having performers from all over Franklin and Hampshire Counties. And on, I have a poster. I don't know if you want to show this on camera, or I'll just bring it up, but I'll give this to you afterwards. Hello, here's my poster.
Hold it up.
Hold it up. Okay. Here we go. So we're having a gala on next Thursday, 22nd, 6:30 to 9:00. It's, we're having a silent auction. Obviously, this is at Black Birch Vineyard, which is why I'm here. I think it's important that the local officials get included in cultural events, so thank you. I'll give this to you. And tomorrow, I'll be sending some special invitations to our special guests, to Marlene and Karen, if you'd like me to do that. So I just wanted to say thank you also for supporting the vineyard, which has been a host for us for events during COVID. And in fact, there was a big event, the first public event that we had was there, and we could only, because of the state's limit on attendance, I think, allow for 200 guests, and over 500 people had signed up to come. So the Symphony is a symphony orchestra. We play all over various venues in Hampshire and Franklin. Our next concert is up in Greenfield. We also have a youth orchestra. That's about 10 years old, and we do have students, young people from Hatfield who are in that orchestra, and we have a chorus. And that's who we are. We do educational concerts in schools. Hatfield comes to those as well. So we're just, I'm inviting you, and you'll get more information about that later. And thank you very much.
And it's competition for our informational meeting on the bike trail, same night and same time that I was just talking about.
I'll pretend and mediate that for you, okay?
But thanks, thanks a lot, Wendy.
Good luck with that. I'm living in North Hampton now, and I apologize if they step on your toes.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thanks, Wendy.
And good luck with the event.
Nice to see you. Yeah, good to see you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board meeting minutes of August 30th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Karen, very much. So the next topic is the Comcast cable license renewal. We had, you know, quite a long discussion about this at our, at our last meeting, and we, we are not approving this tonight, right? But it's, okay.
Correct. You are not approving it, but I'm asking the board to vote a friendly preliminary denial to allow for additional completion for Comcast.
Basically, we're, we're at a point where we need to make a vote of some sort.
Correct.
And we are waiting Comcast to finish doing some paperwork on their end.
Right, and that will allow.
That's, that's the premise for, and people are like, what are you guys doing?
It'll allow the current contract to continue.
Okay.
All right. And the attorney assisting us was kind enough to write a motion. Do you want me to read all this as the motion? I mean, I love attorneys, don't get me wrong, but this.
Oh, that's a lot, yeah. It is a lot.
I'm going to read it because he went to all this work. How's that?
Okay.
All right. Whereas the town of Hatfield granted a cable television renewal license to Comcast Massachusetts with a license term from September 18th, 2012 through September 17th, 2022, hence the date why we're doing this. Whereas the town is, whereas we have not finished completing the cable television license renewal process and reaching cable license agreement with Comcast, I therefore, because an informal renewal license has not completed in time to place it before the board for scheduled meeting on September 13th, 2022, and to protect the interests of the town, Comcast, and the public, the board pursuant to Section 626(c)(1) of the Cable Act hereby votes, or here's my motion, hereby make a motion to issue this friendly preliminary assessment of denial of Comcast's formal license proposal to provide additional time to complete the license renewal process and issue renewable, excuse me, renewal cable license to Comcast.
Second. Again, this is just to give them time to finish up their stuff on their end.
So a motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have, we don't sign this, right?
No, you do not.
I didn't know if this was, there was some little denial box checked or something.
It had appeared they would be finished today, but they didn't.
It was like reading an article at the town meeting.
So we'll have that on our next agenda.
Yes.
Hopefully. Okay. So next is, we have Steeble Eltron here, I guess to just give a presentation on a proposed warehouse and recreational use dog park at 99 West Street. So if you'd want to come up to the. Do you need her to sit at the mic?
Oh.
No, you're good? Okay.
My name's Ellie Steeble. If you want to introduce yourself.
Ellie, hi Frank.
Erica, please.
So we are just here to open a dialogue and sort of share the visions that we're having for this potential dog park recreational space, just a little bit about how this idea came to fruition. I am a registered nurse at Cooley Dickinson, and throughout my experience working through the COVID pandemic, I recognized, you know, the rise in anxiety, depression, isolation, a lot of mental health issues, as well as a lot of Americans adopting dogs. I read earlier that I think 23 million households or 1 in 5 nearly adopted a dog during the pandemic. So I was interested in an idea to bring people together in a healthy space. So that's sort of where the, it came from.
Yeah, and as you all know, Frank Steeble owns this, this property, which he purchased for future expansion of Steeble Eltron. We are doing an expansion currently at 15 West Street. That's, that's our last expansion there, that we started in 2017, actually, before the sewer grant application was even developed. So that's in, in progress right now. It was put on hold due to the pandemic. And this site here, which we're calling 99 West Street, that's pretty much where the number would be, it basically, let me stand on this side here.
Just to let people at home know which parcel we're talking about, sort of when you come down Chestnut Street, it's the one straight ahead, there's often deer in the field.
I'm getting there, right. It's actually, it has the nickname Field of Dreams for a lot of people because of the deer, so.
It used to be the riding stables.
Right, exactly. It used to be the riding stables.
That goes way back.
And it's, it's about a mile up the road from Steeble Eltron. And this parcel, it's actually a lot bigger than it looks, but this is the parcel, it spans from here, and it goes all the way up to Lencied Road here, and Running Gutter Brook runs through here. This is the old gravel pit. So it's also, the aquifer recharge area is in here, and there's a wooded area here, which USA Wasterecycling is right here. There's a private residence here, which used to have a direct road to the barn. So if we look at here, that's kind of an aerial view. There's I-91, Chestnut Street, and then West Street here. This is USA Wasterecycling. This is the residence, and our property line jogs and then joins up with USA Wasterecycling, and then on the other side, it goes straight back. So this is the site we're, we're talking about, but right now, the development we're looking at, we have some kind of long range, maybe you could call pipe dream, but we'll see what happens in the future, of doing a solar village up here, residential, you know, all net zero, solar orientation, passive house potentially. Well, by the time we get to that, that'll be kind of code, so. But that would be in the upper part here. For now, we're looking at this lower part. And because of Ellie's idea for this dog park, I said, well, we've got this fantastic site here, and we've got this historic tobacco barn, and it's a perfect opportunity to preserve it, have a backdrop, a place to put public bathrooms, and we would put an enclosed area here for small and large dogs, and then this would be open space for various activities, disc golf, maybe a parkour, you know, an exercise parkour, or it could be different things. We're, we're going to be on the agenda of the Open Space Committee next month, and we hope to have a community process of design for this, because this is something that, this is Ellie's, Ellie's dream project. Frank is allowing us to use this land. It's, it's a gift to the town. You know, Steeble Eltron has been very happy in town, and we just want to keep things going. So this green area here, all of this would be protected, that we would leave that intact, and we would basically work with this little swath of green space here and concentrating the dog area there. And I know there, there are wetlands. This is a recharge area, so we'd be doing bioswales and vegetative buffers and kind of water quality treatment structures throughout this site. At the entrance, when you come in, you'd have pee posts for the dogs, and they would be tied to the sewer system, because the, the real problem with dog urine is nitrogen. There's a lot of nitrogen. So we would, we're very aware of that. We would mitigate that with nitrogen-absorbing plants like clover and vegetation around the perimeter. The luguminous family is very good at nitrogen fixing, and then there are a lot of aquatic plants that love nitrogen and really hold that. So, and then release it as other plants next to it needed. So, but, but coming in, the pee posts would be tied to the sewer system. So, and yeah, this is sort of, Ellie put a lot of these images together. I don't know if you want to talk about any of them, but this is disc golf. I don't know how many of you are aware of disc golf. It's an, it's like, it's like, you could compare it to pickleball. It's just growing tremendously because it's very accessible to anybody. For $26, you buy plastic gifts, the discs, and.
It's like a frisbee, right? It's a frisbee.
Yeah, it's like, they're like frisbees. They're different sizes, and it's, anybody can do it, even people with, you know, mobility issues or developmental disabilities can play disc golf.
And you can play in the winter.
And you can play all year round, exactly. So that would be part of this course back here. And then, of course, with the barn, we have a fantastic opportunity to create a wonderful space that the community can use, and we also have been in conversation with the Historic Society. They're looking for different areas to do some satellite exhibits, so we could do replicas and, and use the barn for that. That, again, was Ellie's idea. She wanted these artifacts from the community, because it was a tobacco barn. It was moved when 91 was built. It was on the other side, and it was moved over, so it already has some history. And then it was turned into the stables and the pony barns with the riding reins. That all happened in here and here. This was all for the ponies. So, yeah, so that's the, we wanted to just present this to you and see if you have any thoughts, any concerns, any suggestions. Again, we do plan on having a full community process with this, and I just learned today, there are 500 dog licenses in Hatfield, and you have, what, about 560 households? I'm assuming some people have more than one dog, but a lot of dog owners here, so we hope, we hope to meet with them and, and do a design process with them.
Yeah. Just, I'm just thinking of reiterating the aspect of maintaining the historical values of the barn. I love the exposed wood. I love the idea of bringing items over from the museum. I love the idea of showcasing some local art. So it's just opening a conversation for integration of different ideas, and I feel super lucky that people are showing some interest, so, yeah.
And initially, the barn, with the first warehouse layout, the barn was going to go, and then we just said, no, this, we can't do that. It's a historic district. It's the West Hatfield Historic District, so we said, this is perfect. We'll start working on that now. We're bringing in utilities for both that and the warehouse, and then we have a lot of site work to do to prep for the warehouse, so the barn would become sort of an initial staging area for construction. Bathrooms would be there, and, you know, we have to, we have to raise the grade because of flood risks, and it's so, because when they did the overpass with Chestnut Street with I-91, they raised that road around there. So they basically created a dam. So for the, for the trucks to, loading docks to not have flooding constantly, which we're dealing with at 15 West Street right now, we'll have to raise that up. So all of that can happen, and then when we're ready to, to really start that warehouse, the land will be ready.
I think it's a fantastic idea. You're combining culture and art, and you're allowing a space for the community to, to use. I, I want to thank you for bringing this idea forward for the town. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you for saying that.
Where would people park? And I guess I'm curious, so it's, it's a public access, but is it just opens, what in your vision, just open certain hours? I mean, you can't have people just having open access there all the time, right?
Yes, no, we would. We have, we have parking right now, I'm showing parking for about 80 cars here. We do not need 80 cars in our, I mean, we have maybe, what, 10 cars we, we use for our, you know, our facilities right now. So that would be here. Trucks would be in the back. We would do vegetation and landscaping here, so you're not looking at this big warehouse, but really that this is what stands out. And since the barn was already moved, and we have to put in foundations anyway, we're looking at possibly raising it. Right now, the elevation difference between West Street and, and grade here is dangerous. That barn is too close to the road. It's so steep, you can't get in there safely. So since we have to lift it up anyway, to build foundations, to make it, if we want to put in bathrooms and an enclosed space, we would raise it up a little higher, just so it's closer more to street level, so you're, you know, you're not looking down into it, and you don't have the risk of flooding. And then, because of that, that allows us to do, I'm really big on getting stormwater into aquifer recharge areas. And if this summer, you know, doesn't convince anyone that we have to recharge our aquifers, I don't know what will, but we have to. So if we do all sorts of stormwater mitigation here, and anything that's high nitrogen, we would put that into the sewer, and of course, the dog waste, there'll be dog waste bags and stations, and Steeble Properties will handle, you know, the disposal of that. But everything else, by raising the grade here, allows us to really drain everything into the aquifer recharge area, where it's very porous. But it would go through vegetative quality, you know, bioswales that would, would be set up here, and it would be all filtered and clean, so by the time it goes into the ground, it's clean water, and you're recharging your aquifer. So that's sort of a couple of technical notes. But otherwise, you know, something like maybe a dog washing station. We might do a splash pad, some, of course, accessible, park would be accessible. And in answer to your question, hours, one of the big complaints about all the dog parks in the Pioneer Valley is you can't go in the evening, and in the winter, we know how early the sun sets. There's no lighting. So we're big on solar panels. We would put solar panels on the barn when we repair the roof, and there, you know, we, we can have nighttime evening lighting there, so people can use it extended hours. And, yeah, the, the whole point is to have the site being used 24/7. I mean, not in the middle of the night, obviously, but that you have full, full use, so. And with a little cafe, maybe, you know, maybe over time, there's a little lunch thing there, or in the evening, people come for a beer, and we have a paved area just west of the barn here, which would be for different special events, fundraising events with food trucks, et cetera, and we are establishing a 501(c)(3). So it'll be all nonprofit, so if people want to donate, they, they'll, they'll get a tax write-off for it. Did I miss anything?
You're great.
A couple of others.
Very creative.
Any, any other questions? Well, you know, you want full use of the site, but at the same time, you want to preserve the green space, the open space, and the cultural heritage of the barn, and then, of course, get something functional, the warehouse, which would be kind of tucked, tucked aside there.
And so all of this will just go through the normal.
Yes.
Procedures of.
Yes.
Through our, you know, building department, zoning, planning.
Exactly.
This is just for people to know.
Right. This is just preliminary, get your take on things, and see if, I mean, you know, so far, we've had nothing but positive feedback, and, but, you know, we want to check in with everyone.
Well, it's a wonderful gift to the town.
Thank you.
Yeah, very, very creative thinking.
Yeah, I was just going to thank Ellie for her vision, and thank Erica for her presentation, and Frank. You know, it's just another example of what Steeble has done for the town and other communities that you work in, like Hoyoke. I remember we talked about that project, and I think, I think it's a great idea. My daughter's in eastern part of the state, but they're always at a dog park. You know, and I know there's one in South Hadley, and there's one in North Hampton, I think, but there's just nothing close by for everybody who in Hatfield or nearby. So I think it's a great vision, so thank you.
And people travel all over the valley. I've been interviewing people at dog parks everywhere, in every county, and you have during the day, you have elderly people that come with their small dogs, and they, they know each other's dogs by name, but they usually, like you were saying.
You know the name of the dog.
Yeah, they know the name of the dog for sure, not, maybe not the person, but it's, it's a group, and people know. They go at certain times, and they, it's, it's an incredibly social thing. What Ellie has pointed out is.
At least a lot of people from lately.
Can't underestimate that.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Very nice, very creative.
And that way, we get full use of the site.
Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Yeah. Yes, that'd be great. Thanks again. Thank you, Wendy.
What's that?
I was just saying bye to Wendy.
Thanks, Wendy. Okay, next, we have the Hatfield Firefighters Association, and this is the, the request for the ceremonial bonfire permit for the annual bonfire that we all look forward to so much. With this, we've got the full crew here tonight.
So the first part is the actual permit, and that's actually through the fire department. So under Mass General Law, every town and community in the Commonwealth can have one ceremonial bonfire per year, and it has to be approved by the Select Board. So this is something that we've, the fire, all the fire chiefs for the last 10 years or 11 years has come forward with this, so this is the, the request to the Select Board for approval, and as you can see the letter, I know I submitted it a week or two ago. So that's, that's my side of it from the fire department, because we are the ones that are in control of the actual fire that night. The event itself is being put on by the Firefighters Association.
And I'll make a motion in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 111, Section 142h, permit for one ceremony bonfire by the Hatfield Firemen's Association for October 8th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. But we don't, there's no spot here for us to sign that. You sign that. Oh, no. No.
I put one in there. It was the chief's letter.
It says, oh, I see, right here.
The signatures.
It looks like it's just me.
That's for the.
Liquor license.
That's for the liquor license. There could be.
Yeah, this is the liquor license.
There's no official permit for the, for the actual fires that you are approving and allowing one ceremonial bonfire.
So you got it.
The signatures are.
Right.
Apparently, I move over another.
Switch.
Next.
Next.
Musical chairs.
So I'm Carrie Flaherty. This is Ray Romero. We're both part of the association and obviously part of the fire department and part of the group that is in charge of. group that is in charge of the bonfire. So tonight, we're here just to get approval for our one-day liquor license. You don't have in front of you right now the actual insurance policy yet. We always go with Amherst Insurance, and I am in the midst of getting a new, we, we had a change in our bartenders this year, so there was some documentation that needed to be changed and new paperwork filled out. So I have to email that back tonight to Amherst Insurance, and then they'll get me the application. So before the event happens, you'll have an official insurance policy that we always get for coverage and then for the whole entire event. And it covers the alcohol portion, it covers all of our people on site, et cetera. So there's insurance coverage for the whole entire event. This year, our event is October 8th, and we have, Holly May is coming back again doing acoustics for about 45 minutes. We have Ultimatum coming as a new band this year for an hour, for an hour of the event. Then we have Warren Ziders, and then we have A Thousand Horses. So they're co-headliners of the event. It's, you know, it's, we're using a variety of attractions this year as a management company, and they've been really helpful and supportive of getting our event kind of back up and running again of what it was previously. Last year was great, having it be the first year out of COVID and having people back. So we're just hoping for the same type of involvement we've had over the years. It's a great night for people just to come out, enjoy themselves, enjoy the October weather right at the beginning of the nice changeover of hot to coolness. We've been very lucky, knock on wood, that we have not had, I think we've only had one event that's had a little bit of bad weather, and it, it actually was during the day and it held out for us to actually have the event. So we've never had to cancel an event, thankfully. And thankful to our sponsors and all that kind of stuff. So we're just looking for our approval tonight for the liquor license so that we have one less thing to worry about before the event.
Certainly something I look forward to every year. It's great. And I know that with the proceeds of this, you do a lot for the community, so.
Yeah, it does. We've been able to make lots of donations.
I know it's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, yeah.
It's a lot of work, and, and we appreciate it as a community, because it's really a fun night.
Yeah, it is. We like it, and we've been able to make donations to lots of different parts of the town. So.
Sounds great.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a one-day liquor license for the Hatfield Firefighters Association on October 8th and waive the $75 fee.
And this is contingent on getting us a ticket of insurance.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll get that too soon as I have it.
Yep.
And I'll second that.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
See you there. Chief, back to you.
So the, I brought this back to the floor as we discussed back in May around budgeting season about having a working group put together to start looking at the operations of the fire and EMS department, partially at the request of you folks, the select board, and finance committee as well was looking into it. When we spoke previously back in May and June, the thought was that the meetings would start in October, because obviously budgeting season and budget requests will be coming for the middle of December. So we need time to meet and kind of look at the operations before we get deep into it. And the other idea was that it was going to give us six months of data of having, having weekend coverage and then seven-day-a-week coverage that began on July 1st. So to be able to kind of move the process forward, I was hoping that, I know I submitted a letter back in June of a couple of folks that I felt would be beneficial to be on that working group. So figuring whether or not you are going to appoint them or list them at somewhere. I know there's a question on a finance committee member sitting on it, but it's not a committee, and that's why we're kind of going with a working group, because we're just looking at the operations, not really a, a true decision-making group.
Right.
So just want to get that, get that out there and see if you folks wanted to make the appointments tonight, so then I can start the process of, you know, making those contacts and figuring out what days work for folks as we move forward, because it's fast approaching.
It was agreed at that meeting in June that we would bring this back for discussion in September.
Right. So who's sort of leading the, I mean, it should be, you know, in other words, not just necessarily headed up by Bob, but it should be, right?
Right. Somebody from the select board.
Right.
Was suggested somebody from the finance committee. And actually, the chief had, had recommended the number, I think, on, on that work, in the working, working group.
Ideally, you know, most committees work better with five, because in case somebody can't make it, you don't end up running into a, can you still hold the meeting? So I envisioned that.
But this is just an informational thing. There's not really a quorum issue.
So you can have more people to, to draw from. So I kind of looked at originally as that, basically, two members of the department, one being myself, a member of the select board, and I, Mr. Chorworski is my liaison. So that was my, my recommendation, because he is the liaison. I had said Mr. Barry from the finance committee, and then back then, I had also mentioned David Keir as a person. He's, he's well-versed in town politics. He's been through budgeting processes and things like that. So it was just another person that, he's been in town for a long time.
He's great to work with.
He's also on capital planning.
And he's on capital planning, so he's, he's, he really stays on top of, you know, what's happening in town. But he's also very objective and, so that was, how many, that was the five?
Yep.
I mean, there's no, but there's, yeah, I mean, I guess, okay.
I mean, anybody can come to the meetings, in my opinion. I think they're open. It's, it's a discussion. But if it comes down to, you know, taking some type of vote within the group of how, how it proceeds, I think you, keeping it to five is an easier number to work with and.
I guess I'd like to think about the structure a little bit more and the suggestions, and it's not, you know.
Yep. We'll pull your, your letter from June and resend it to the board to.
Okay.
With, with, it just, just for, you know, purposes of thinking it out, just the structure that he had suggested and.
Just a two from the department, kind of two from the town site, and then a town resident was my thought process.
So two from the fire department or another depart, oh.
No, two from my department. So I have, you know, myself and one other person on my, kind of on my side. We're kind of be able to talk things through and, and bring up data points. And then obviously, two from the, the town management side of select board and finance committee to kind of look at that side of it, and then just the resident.
All right. Yeah, I'd like to give it some more thought.
And I think, so thank you for the reminder, first off. And I think it, if, if it's going to kick off in October, probably no later than November, but in October sometime, I mean, that just gives another, today's the middle of September, you know, another few weeks of, of any more data that might come in.
Well, the idea was that we would start pulling that data after September, at the end of September, so the meetings would start in October.
Well, right, that's what I mean.
Ultimately, a lot of the decisions that may come out of this discussion ultimately affects that budget that I have to.
It affects the budget.
Submit for December 15th.
Understood.
A month, and you got a holiday and a few other things that all of a sudden it's.
Right.
Shrinking down.
Right. And I, I mean, this is, looking at this as a big undertaking, and I think it'll be part of the budget discussions in an ongoing basis that we start after the first of the year, so.
Yeah, but.
I think we have a little bit more time to think about.
We do, but, but I think it's important that we, given that, you know, it's sort of a trial year, given the funding that was available to us. So, you know, the more information we can have, obviously, the, as we get ready for the budget for next year, the, the better.
My concern is that as we get closer, it makes it very, very difficult for me as the department head to create a budget when I don't know the direction that.
Yeah.
Understood.
That's totally understood.
And if I don't have that, if we don't even have that answer until, you know, March, when we kind of really get into it, it makes it very difficult to try to create.
Understood, Bob.
The direction that we're going. I know that I've already heard a lot of things, things have gotten back to me that, about the department, I wish the people would come to me instead of, you know, talking behind my back, I guess. But I have a lot of information that I think a lot of people would be interested in, and I've, you know.
I mean, it is important, because this committee basically is going to be looking at a lot of data and reviewing the data and putting that together. So I, I don't see an issue. We've talked about moving it along in October. I do like your suggestion of who you have for the committee, but if, if you feel waiting till the next meeting to make the appointments, that's fine. But I think, I agree, we should be getting ready to move in October like we've mentioned, even if it's the later part of October.
Even later September. We have another meeting in September.
Yeah, next week.
Well, we have the Connecticut River meeting next week, and then that's it.
Next Thursday.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
I would agree, a comment that Bob just made, and it's human nature and it happens with every department. But I, I do think that if, if residents or people have a concern about anything in town, they, they should go to the source and ask a question. Because what often happens is the behind-the-scenes chatter then takes on a life of its own, and it, it's often not the correct information, or, or it's been diluted in a way, not, not intentionally, but as, as it goes from a person to a person to a person, sometimes the information changes or gets convoluted. And I think it's only fair that if people want an answer, you go to the source of where you think the problem may lie or where the question lies. So that's it, I'm off my soapbox.
That's agreed, because rumors create their own little life after a while. I mean, it's best to go to the source and find out exactly. I agree with that.
And I have had a couple of folks stop, and, you know, they, they ask questions. Obviously, the interview was on Western Mass News after the Bridge Street fire. So they, they approached me, and I did have some folks, town residents, you know, stop in and talk to me, and they catch me on the street, and they're asking more questions about really what's going on. But I think there's a lot of bad information. There's a lot of information that people don't realize of what we do and how many calls we handle and a lot of those things. And I think it's just, I've, I've heard the comments, I've been here for 21 years on the department, I've heard it all, that, you know, we can't save a cellar hole, we can't do a lot of things. And it, it's degrading to the members of the department and then those that have been in the leadership positions over the years, that they don't think very highly of us. And it's, then why do people come and volunteer to do with us if you're going to put them down every time that you get a chance? And that's, a lot of that's what's happening. It just happened to one of my captains, one of my lieutenants last week.
Well, that's where I sort of disagree with you. I think the, the amount of people that are negative are very small numbers. I think the majority of people in town appreciate what the firefighters do and appreciate the volunteers in this town. And I, I say that from my heart, I think the majority do. You're always going to have, you're always going to have somebody complain about something. I mean, it's just the way it is.
It's just the loudest group. That's, usually the loudest group is the one that gets the most attention, and that's ultimately what's happening, and then they are spreading it to their other circles. I've heard a lot in the last four months.
Yeah, I'm sure. I think Ed speaks for, I think Ed speaks for Diane and I as well with those comments, though, that we certainly appreciate everything that, you know, the department does, and all, all the departments. I mean, every time we have an opportunity.
I think our last two meetings opened with a thanks to the fire department.
Yeah, I mean, we.
And we appreciate it.
Yeah. But Ed's also right. I think it's a small portion, or, or, you know, sometimes people just like to talk.
It's the same with every department, Bob.
That's right. And sometimes those are the voices that, that, that rise, but it doesn't, they don't speak for the majority.
That's true.
That's, that's the bottom line, so.
Okay.
Well, so I guess maybe.
We'll, we'll, you know, we.
Next week or in the next couple of meetings, we'll approve. But I, I also think that, and I'm, I'm not sure of the right venue for, you know, as, as the discussion starts with the five-member group about the future or, or potential changes or what we want to do, you know, putting things together, I think the word does need to be out there to the public. And I'm not sure with that, with the, the best way of doing that. And, and what I'm talking about is all the good things that the fire department does, you know? So maybe after the bonfire, after you guys have a meeting or two, we could have some sort of an update, like, you know, here's, here's what we've discussed, and then here's some of the numbers. I mean, it's all public information.
The options have to be presented.
That's right.
To town in, in a fair and reasonable way.
Right. Yep. Because ultimately, it's the town that's going to decide.
Because this is, this is, you know, we, we need to be providing the best coverage we possibly can for our residents within the confines of the budgets that we have to work with.
Right, yep.
So.
Best bang for your buck.
Exactly.
Yep, exactly.
This one's a tough one. It's life safety.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep. Okay. Excellent, thanks, chief.
Thanks, Bob.
Appreciate it. Okay, so we have some, we're next, we're now going to go to your report. Marlene, opening with some resignations.
Yes. It's always sad to see resignations.
I know.
So, you know, as, as the board knows that Bob Wagner and his wife are, are leaving Hatfield, and we have now received his resignation from the planning board effective September 8th. So the, you also have in front of you, I believe, a memo from the planning board chair, Stephanie Slid, expressing that the planning board is interested in having the vacancy filled, because it's an elected position. It, in the past, sometimes so close to the annual May election, you know, we haven't posted it. But since that's several months away, they would like to, to fill that vacancy. So the, the board declares, because, and, and so the select board and the planning board will meet.
Right.
Once there have been letters of interest in, in the position.
Yeah, I mean, they, they have, you know, they, the planning board has a really, you know, really important big job to do. They need to have a full, full slate, so. And it is, it's such a loss, because Bob has been, you know, so great and done, done so much work, so much good work, and he's so knowledgeable, so he's going to be missed, I know for sure.
And this would be an appointed position until the May election.
Would be appointed to fill the remainder.
And then that vacancy would be on the ballot.
Was his, is his, his term is up this year?
I believe he had one more year.
So we don't appoint for the remainder of his term, just appoint to the next election?
I believe it's until the May election.
Okay.
Regardless of how many years he had.
And then whoever runs will finish the balance of that term.
So at this point, are we asking for interested people to send?
We, I will get the notice posted immediately, and letters of interest can be submitted We, I will get the notice posted immediately and, um, letters of interest can be submitted to my office and I will share that information with the planning board.
Okay. And that we ultimately appoint or do we appoint jointly with them?
It's a jointly.
Okay.
I think you already said that, sorry.
So if anybody's interested for the planning board, get your information to Marlene so she can share.
So do you need an official vote to accept Bob's resignation, Marlene?
Uh, it's been officially received by the town clerk's office.
Oh.
The board still can vote to accept it and normally a board, a letter is sent to the board.
Yes, I, well, certainly that's, that would be appropriate.
I'll make a motion that we accept with regret the resignation of Bob Wagner and, and thank him for his many years of dedicated service.
I'll second that.
Yes, I agree with all that. I mean, we've mentioned the, the great things Bob has done over the years on the YAG, council and, on the planning board. He's spent a lot of time and effort helping to preserve farmland in town and, and he's done a lot, so I, he's going to be missed and he's big shoes to fill.
Been a real asset.
Yeah.
Real asset. Okay, so a motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have an additional resignation from the Board of Trustees of the Hatfield Library, Amy Goklowski.
Goklowski. And there is someone that is expressing interest in that, but we still have to post it.
Okay.
So we will hold on to the, the interest expressed, yeah, Allison Church, but we do need to post the vacancy.
Right, that's great that she's interested. Okay, so we should probably do the same thing. I'll make a motion that we vote to accept the resignation of Amy Goklowski from the Board of Trustees of the Hatfield Library with regret.
Second. And thank you for your contributions to the town, Amy.
Very much so.
Yep.
So a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Topic seven, I would just ask that the board defer this to a future meeting. I had expected that we would have the, the contract for the board's approval and signatures, but it was, the contract was returned to the union for some edits and
And move the table, topic seven.
Second. Motion, we don't really need to move to table it, do we?
No, just defer it to a meeting, future meeting.
And then the last item is to approve a contract, an employment contract?
Yes.
So this is an employment contract with
To fill the
To fill the collector treasurer position and this is with Patricia Cotton?
Yes, it is.
So the I, I mean, I will make a motion to approve the employment contract as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Cotton will begin working for the town next Monday, the 19th.
That's great.
Monday, the 19th.
Yep.
There you go. That's it.
You're welcome. All right, just if I may, under unanticipated new business?
Sure.
So this is something new that has developed as a result of the renovations that were, we're looking to have the upstairs bathroom renovated and prospective contractor went upstairs into the attic, that's just above kitchen bathroom.
Do I even want to hear that?
And I have discussed with the DPW facilities director, so there were some holes found in the roof, which I was quite surprised because
It's new.
Yes, in 2011 maybe?
Barely new, yep.
The end of 2010, 2011. So that is something that needs to be addressed immediately. You know, there are a few holes there and Phil is going to reach out to the roofer.
Okay.
That did it originally?
That did the work. But, you know, I have no idea what, what we're looking at for costs and I did have a conversation with Ed in the office the other day. He came in right after I had, you know, actually I talked to Phil afterwards, but I had mentioned it to, to Ed. So I don't know if that's, that, the cost of, of the work may be something that we utilize the ARPA funds for covering that cost.
There wouldn't be an insurance to access?
Well, let's, you know, yeah, absolutely, there could be. We should wait and hear what the roof contractor has to say, but definitely, yeah, that, they, those holes should not be there.
Yeah.
Did the, because I'm sure now that we've, I didn't know anything about this till now, which is fine, except I think we need to, I'll ask the question, so do we know of any damage that was done?
We don't.
But I'm sure people are wondering that now that we brought up the topic, so.
Right, so we don't.
Where about is it? Is it on?
It appears that it's on the east side of the building.
The front?
Yeah.
Well, once the roofing contractor gets in here and gives us a report, then we'll have more information.
Yeah, we may know if it caused it or if it was
But it, you know, yeah, my concern is
Faulty work, if it was some kind of damage.
Yeah.